Okay, everybody, we'll go ahead and get started. It is May thirteenth, four oh one. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'll do a roll call of Plaining Commissioners. Howard Trips?
Here.
Joey Edwards is out of the country. Steve Stevens?
Here.
Dave Clark Farrell? And Jason Marivo? County Commissioners, Commissioner Fiedler?
Here.
Commissioner Mudge?
Here.
Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Any changes to the agenda? Updates from staff?
Um, updates from staff. We met with community builders. We, and the city joined us for our kind of first discussion into the scope of work, into a values and visioning process coming off of our, come on in, Halsey. David Clark Farrell, for the record, just joined. For our kind of community engagement that we have been accepted to work with community builders on. And so, we're getting excited about that work and we'll kind of stay posted. We'll have more information coming up. We have probably a dozen land use applications that we are in various stages of completeness review on. We have everything from a new major subdivision PUD to rezone applications, UPS. We have, it's gonna start getting very busy. We've got probably, what do you say? We've got about ten to twelve pending applications. All, none that we have officially accepted yet, but getting very close. Except, that's not true. We have a backcountry structure that will be setting. I think we've set that for June tenth?
June tenth.
June tenth. So we do have a backcountry site plan for a property that wants to put in a backcountry build, just a temporary structure residential. And so that one has been set for June tenth. But hold on tight. We definitely have a lot of things coming our way.
Uh, we have minutes to approve from April twenty second. You may have a chance to review those, make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second? Okay, long favor, aye? Okay, we have a new business. It's file twenty-four dash zero eight, Silver King Land Unit Development Site Plan Review continuation. And I will go ahead and read opening statement and turn it over to staff. The Lake County Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners will now conduct a joint public hearing. This statement I am reading shall be incorporated into and made part of the record on these proceedings. The Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners have jurisdiction to conduct a joint public hearing on a planned due development without subdivision. This type of application is processed consistent with a rezoning under section three dot one three of the Lake County Land Development Code. Concurrently, the Planning Commission is addressing the site plan review requirement for all commercial uses seeking construction permits. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the proposed amendment shall, should be approved. In considering the matter, the Commission will address the approval criteria set forth in sections three dot one, three dot three, three dot one one dot three H, and three dot one five dot three E of the Lake County Land Development Code. The procedure to be followed in this hearing will be, one, members of the Commission and/or the Board will disclose if they have any ex parte communications. Two, the applicant may then make their presentation. Three, county staff will respond with any outstanding items or concerns. Four, after that, any persons either supporting or opposing the application may present evidence. Five, supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the Commission and the Board. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the Chair. Six, the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. The parties and witnesses are asked to not submit redundant, irrelevant, or cumulative evidence. If someone has already made the point that he wished to make, please simply say so. The Chair will also require that all comments be made to the Planning Commission and the Board and that there be no dialogue between the applicant and members of the audience. At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the Chair will entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and the Commission will discuss and weigh evidence. Then there will be a motion to close the discussion phase of the joint public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will then lead the meeting and the Chair of the Planning Commission will entertain a motion on the application. The motion may take the form of one of the following recommendations. One, approve the application with no conditions. Two, approve the application with recommended conditions. Or three, deny the application. The Planning Director shall make a record for any substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record with the recommendation of the Commission. The Commission's recommendation will be in the form of a statement of motion. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the Commission or to the form or substance of these proceedings? Hearing none, I will now ask each Planning Commission number and then each County Commissioner if you have any ex parte communications to disclose. And if so, please disclose them now. Howard Trips? Nope, we can't hear you, Howard.
None, none.
Thank you. Steve Stevens?
None.
Dave Clark Farrell?
None.
Jason Marivo?
None.
Heather Lynn, none. Commissioner Fiedler?
None.
Commissioner Mudge?
None.
Commissioner Edwards?
None.
Staff may now proceed with Shepherd.
Thank you so much. This evening, we thought that it would be most beneficial to let the applicant go ahead and start this evening with their presentation. So if there's no objections from the Planning Commission, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Blue Hour and let them present their proposal. Great.
Awesome. I think maybe we can flip right here over to page ten since it's a bit of a repeat of kind of our presentation from a few weeks ago. So thanks again for taking your time to get your, our proposal today. We really appreciate the feedback from last meeting and have been working to incorporate all this feedback and then also working with Ann, Cece Paul, and company to kind of incorporate their feedback and been working with them immediately kind of following last, last meeting, but also all the way up through today, this afternoon. So I think Ann will probably speak a bit more to the staff report. I think we have an understanding that there's probably still a little bit more ways to go here and we'd really love to continue to work to make this something that will be, uh, will be great and provide a lot of workforce housing for the community. So just want to highlight a few of the different pieces here that we've updated since the last PUD and the zoning control document. So first was qualification five. I think we heard some pretty strong opinions about qualification five as maybe it was a non-starter. So that is, that is fine. We've taken that feedback and we've just straight up struck that from the zoning control document. So should not have any, hopefully any concerns there, so without removal. Second, I think there was a, the feedback was how do we make sure that these units don't just get jacked up in price and then folks from other counties end up renting them because we outprice potentially Lake County? And so, you know, on the other side, we're like, how do we protect units on, you know, pricing as they move down? So what we, we try to create a mechanism here that we think would work really well, where we basically look at the average rental price for the folks from Lake County or for whoever that bucket of, um, of units is meant for or is reserved for. We look at the average rental price. We put it in the market for, for fourteen days. And if we are getting no applications, our goal is to then move on and expand if it was your qualifications one and two, which as a reminder is Lake County. We would then move to the broader counties for another fourteen days. If there were still no applications, we would open it up. I think the goal here is really to make sure that the property stays occupied. I think from our understanding, there is so much demand for housing in Lake County and the surrounding counties that like, we hope that it never comes to this, but we do want to create a mechanism that we think allows for us to move forward on that without creating an administrative burden for the, uh, the housing authority. That being said, we really do want to work with the housing authority in this process. So I think, thinking about how we can kind of incorporate some words about how we will consult with the housing authority without, you know, we didn't want to create an administrative burden. So what we put in here is kind of a checks and balances, as you would call it, is, is really the option for the housing authority to kind of request an audit or request us to provide some information to show that this is actually the process we're following. Once again, I hope that we're not getting to this because I think there's such a demand within the county and in surrounding counties. So that is our proposal, is a mechanism to kind of offer rents at a fair price and ensure the property stays full. So happy to kind of answer any questions around that as well. Finally, here, it was heard that, you know, what have, after year five, it's just not a high enough percentage being reserved for Lake County and surrounding counties. So we have decreased from kind of that twenty-five percent, which is twelve and a half and twelve and a half, to thirty-seven and a half percent, percent reserved for Lake County and twelve and a half percent for surrounding counties. With the understanding that I think as we spoke about last time, for the first five years, that basically all of the units would be for Lake County in the sense that they would be master leased. You know, I guess moving over to the next, maybe just to highlight it, to reiterate from the last time, we, we obviously want this project to move forward and want it to be successful and want it to be financeable and all those other pieces. And so we felt that this is the best opportunity to ensure that kind of success of the project while securing housing for the, for the county. And, um, you know, just to highlight on all this, that anything isn't reserved, we still have preferential treatment for, for individuals looking.
Yeah, and we're excited about this project to bring, you know, housing and affordable housing to Lake County in, in a really timely manner versus having to wait a number of years, which normally that takes for develop, new development. We believe this adaptive reuse will bring these units online much faster. And I've been really enjoying working with staff on, on this proposal and getting, you know, collecting feedback on the meeting we had last and all the meetings we've had since. So I think our goal here is, you know, to offer the ability to have fifty-six new units in the market in Lake County.
And yeah, we're really excited. It's been a great process to kind of understand all the different pieces and all the different kind of, to, to get aligned. Because everyone has, there's so many different pieces of history and there's so many different pieces that we're trying to solve for here. So I think we are moving in the right direction and hopefully getting closer to where, you know, everyone would feel comfortable pushing, pushing this forward and bringing these units. Because I think at the end of the day, that what we really don't want is to end up with nowhere for a thousand units, which I don't think helps anyone. So, you know, excited to continue the conversation and answering any questions anyone has here today. And think, once again, I think we had a really productive conversation with staff today as well. So really appreciate it and we'll leave it there and we're happy to answer any questions and I think Ann and Cece.
You gotta throw our presentation a few weeks ago.
No, I mean, to go through another, any minute of that.
Thank you. Yeah, Ann, if you want to go ahead and then we can move to questions after the two.
That sounds great. So, you know, conceptually, the adaptive reuse of the Silver King Suites and Inn to workforce housing is something, as you may share in the staff report, something that staff was a bit enthusiastic about. However, we have to make sure that it's truly effective for our community. And I think that we can probably all think of scenarios where development has suggested through the development process that it was going to be affordable or that it was going to provide workforce housing in our community. And unfortunately, too often, those developments have not delivered on what the intent is that they suggested within our applications. And so to date, none of them have actually had a positive effect on providing workforce or affordability within the community. And in fact, unfortunately, they've had a reverse effect. They've driven up the market rate and, um, and then resulted in increases in property taxes. So we haven't had a development in front of us as a community that really has been able to bring true either workforce forward or affordability forward. And so what staff shared in the staff report, that the proposal that's before us today, which has increased the set aside, if you will, for fifty percent in years five to fifteen, or year six to fifteen, a fifty percent and a fifty percent to the open market. There's, there's evidence and findings that staff's made that just doesn't support that this truly is a community, a net community benefit. Also, the thought that this provides a housing opportunity for a singular employee, or employer, excuse me, within the community and there's no checks and balances. There is a if, the opportunity could arise to allow for an opportunity for an essential worker. If there was a vacancy, then perhaps Climax would participate in providing housing. So basically, I want to provide, just read into the record the findings that staff provided in the staff report. And first is the finding for rezone. And we need to be able to find that the application does bear a reasonable relationship to the welfare of the community based on the following. And staff is not able to make that finding based on the workforce housing needs of the community are not being met through an exclusive master lease of the property by a singular employer. Housing opportunities for essential workers, schoolteachers, firefighters, law enforcement, restaurant servers, retail workers, et cetera, are not being addressed. There is no consideration of transitional or housing stabilization opportunities as identified, as an identified community need. The sunset of occupancy qualifications will remove this housing opportunity for the local workforce, rendering definitively no longer a workforce housing project. There is no qualified evidence that the rental of forty-two units within the first five years to Climax employees will create workforce opportunity elsewhere within the local housing inventory. Based on the submitted proposal, there is not a way to ensure adherence to the occupancy qualifications prior to lease to the open market. Based on the submitted proposal, there is not a way to ensure adherence to the occupancy requirements without an existing lease audit, resulting in impractical compliance. And then the finding associated with compliance with the PUD preliminary plan. Staff is again not able to find compliance with PUD standards. Based on the following, chapter nine defines workforce housing as deed restricted housing intended to serve permanent residents of Lake County who meet eligibility criteria related to employment within Lake County. The applicant's change of a succession of a minimum of three months, which may not be considered a long enough term, were counted with a, with a minimum of thirty days. This does not align with the definition of serving permanent residents of Lake County. It does seem to align more with Climax traditional, transitional or shift workforce. The intent of this PUD criterion is to provide long-term housing solutions for Lake County. As proposed, the Silver King redevelopment application does not. The intent is for more direct involvement through the Lake County Housing Authority, again, something that is missing through this proposal. And the Silver King redevelopment application has not provided enough evidence that as proposed, the proposal will effectively serve the community's workforce housing needs. So that, or the findings that staff had brought forward in the staff report. However, today we had a meeting with applicants. We went through, we were, and discussed different ways in which the proposal perhaps could align with the code criteria. And so what we are seeking this afternoon, after discussing it with the applicant, is an opportunity to go back to the table and discuss some ways in which they might be able to better meet the needs of the community. And so we want, for your consideration, a tabling of this application to a date certain, where we can continue to look at whether or not we're able to get to a point that staff would be able to support the application. Of course, that is at the discretion of the Planning Commission and whether they would like to take that additional time to see if this is a proposal that staff would be able to provide you support.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I, I feel like the conversations are moving in the right direction. I understand, I understand how it started in, in this way and not necessarily seeing some of the ways that we've been hurt before, you know? And so I think you guys have, at least in my opinion, shown that you're willing to work this and figure out a good partnership with the county. So I'm all about continuing the conversations if staff is and how's anybody else feel?
My second. I agree that there's awesome potential and I'm excited for the conversation to continue.
I do think it's a great opportunity, if there is any additional feedback that either the Board of County Commissioners or the County Commission would like to give the applicant. You know, this is a great opportunity. If there's any additional items that maybe weren't included in the staff report that you feel would benefit these discussions if we kind of were going to continue discussions with the applicant. Any other feedback might be a little bit additional that we might have today as well. So I would just encourage the Board and the County Commission to think about that.
Yeah, I would say like the, and I think Ann's already kind of hit the nail on the head. I think that upon first glance, like a master lease with somebody like Climax that's a being employer or county, like being able to serve or, you know, those, those workers, like on the surface, that sounds great. But there's so many vacancies that end up in those scenarios. And we do lack being able, and I kind of see at first hand, like how many people that feel like there's nothing available, there's nothing available, you know? And know that there technically is something, but just can't be rented because Climax has this master lease. I think that's, I think, the direction that some of us are coming from as far as the concern with that piece of it. And it seems like a great project that I, I think that, I know the ease of a master lease makes sense, but the actual reality of it may be more suited for a per-unit kind of situation. But obviously you guys can keep working that out. But I think that would be my concern is just, yeah, there's, I mean, the Climax building is a great example. There's a ton of empty units in there right now, you know? And that stinks when there's so many people still needing apartments. So that would be my only, my main feedback on, on that piece.
Oh, go, go ahead, go ahead. I mean, it's the out years for me a little bit. You know, this thing steadily progresses to be a hundred percent open. At that point in time, you know, market price is going to dictate. And we haven't gone down in price either in the last three years. And again, then it ceases to be, in those outer years, it ceased to be, you know, really affordable Lake County housing. And that's kind of the gist of where I'm coming from. I, I made a move with percentages. That was my comment last time. And I really appreciate you guys doing that. That makes a lot of sense. It's just that, it just seems like the majority needs to be tied to Lake County residents as opposed to even Summit, Chaffee, I think we've got to make it more Lake County centric.
Yeah, because I think the, you know, smaller communities, which I, by the way, we didn't want people to progress to other communities because we have so many differences, but I'm going to do it. And that like, Crestaby is a great example. Like they had a bunch of rentals and people were willing to long-term rent them to use them as a short-term, or use them as a short-term thing. And then there's nowhere for workforce to live. So it's just hard to not want to prepare for that and find a way to, like I said at the last meeting, I'm, I'm not necessarily about putting the numbers on it, but the actual workforce deed restriction and that being its primary goal is more important to me than the length of the lease.
Yeah, I was just gonna, what Steven said, five years is a short period of time. And I don't know, I'd like to see more around what's going to happen in that five years or just more concrete something. Because I mean, this is a, a project that, I mean, COVID was what, almost five years ago, right? And it started? And it's like, came by real quick. Or maybe it feels like that. But I, I would just like to see a little bit more planning around what that looks like at the five-year mark. I mean, a lot can change in that period of time. And it, you know, the, I guess my biggest heartache is the rezoning at five years. You could do all kinds of other stuff that wasn't ever intended, that we've never even discussed here. Is that correct? I mean, I don't know, what was the original rezoning to specifically?
We're gonna, they're gonna, it's PUD zoning, but it would be residential use. So they're taking it from hotel to, to family residential.
Right, but in five years, we could knock all that down and start over and build some new buildings.
Well, they have to come back to us for a whole new application. But they could do that anyhow.
But they could, right.
Anybody can do that now. But it's not part of this application, it's not to do that.
But then it may be nowhere in the realm of affordable housing whatsoever at that point in time. To include the proximity to that thoroughfare, which was intended for business to begin with, that's just a little bit worrisome for me.
One other concern I, I can't express, it's kind of new to the world we live in now. But I had a little bit of concern with the open areas of fifty percent. After six, to the sixth, to the fifteen years, then after, obviously, year sixteen, it goes to a hundred percent. There's a thing going on nowadays where we've got, government organizations now that are being funded through the government to support newcomers. I get a little bit of concern with that into the community a little bit. That gets reasonable to be concerned with it. I don't see any guardrails on this open, you know, who are we going to get, who's going to be involved in taking those other units? There's no, doesn't seem to be any guardrails on it. And, you know, I mean, we don't talk about that necessarily being even people who are employed. I mean, we don't, we don't put that restriction on it. We don't talk about them being, you know, US citizen. We don't talk about any, any guardrails at all in the open. I just ask that we kind of consider that, if we're going to, what are that percentages of the that we kind of have some guardrails on that or think through that process a little bit, so.
Yeah, and I believe Heather mentioned last time that the commercial real estate is slowly going away and we're losing that sales tax revenue as well.
Anything extra? Howard, did you have anything additional you wanted to add or?
Heather, at this point, I don't have anything to add for whatever the three of you have brought up so far.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't.
Just thinking about it.
I don't think I do. I do, I do think I need to, I would like to think of over about some of the factors on that commercial, taking away the commercial aspect. But otherwise, I think that's my biggest concern, about changing, uh, use of that property.
I think it's a clarifying question to be in your write-up that says that, you know, more than fifty percent would have an adverse effect in, from lenders, bankers, et cetera. Could you keep it at that fifty percent indefinitely? Or is that fifty percent, they're saying it would have an adverse effect in that first fifteen years?
We, this is part of our discussion that we've had today and we're hoping to come back with something that I think addresses kind of all of these questions here. I mean, so to answer your question, we're hoping to come back with something that will continue to give comfort in the longevity of the project and the conversion in those pieces. It's, but we, we are focused on workforce housing and that's our long-term goals. And, and, and we just, you know, we obviously want to, we want the project to go through. And so we're sitting in between a lot of different, a lot of different parties and we just want to make sure that we're like, ensure the highest chance of success here. So, so we're happy, you know, we'll be back with some more if we're given the chance to kind of continue.
Absolutely, it's a consideration, something that we're actively discussing.
Awesome, thank you.
Jeff?
I mean, I think I agree with a lot of the questions and comments that they made. So especially that, you know, what
So especially that, you know, what happens after fifteen years or for the five years, I, I mean, just, and, and as that, especially if there's that trade-off of losing some commercial lodging. You know, really want to make sure that we're like growing the inventory of what's available for local workers. You know, it's complicated to define that.
Hmm.
Um, and I sympathize that it's complicated in the financing world to magically make this happen. Um, I think, and then again, I agree with the point, or, you know, the question, comments have been made about sort of, I mean, it's about some percent of some of this being locked up for some time on, where, um, and I want to go outside the bounds of like the criteria, but I do think he, the, I think it'd be good to like really make sure that Climax and Eric just in their mental research or hearing these comments and make sure that they hear the desire. I'm speaking to the Planning Commission, but I think what I'm hearing is like the desire to like really make sure we're growing the pie of the PUD and not have any, like, one employer take a silver out of the pie and lock it up. Just want to see that kind of clearly being included, overstep. Yeah, but, but they, I, I just think that, that is what I'm talking about everything. Climax needs to be a part of this.
Thanks. Um, do we have a list of people?
There's no, there's kind of.
Oh, there's a lot of people in this room. Well, I'll start with Zoomers while we're passing that around. If I can get the Zoom shown up there, that would be great.
Yeah.
Looks like we maybe only have one person on Zoom. Uh, Cameron Green, did you have any public comments that you wanted to share?
I do not, thanks for asking.
Thanks. Um, okay, well, while that board is circular, um, yeah, the board is circulating. If there's anybody in the public that has anything they'd wish to say, if you can just raise your hand and. Yeah, if you can just state your name and then, yeah.
Chief, I'm on the planning director at the city level. I did not read the Packer staff report, but the city planning commission did submit a comment letter, um, to the BSC and the County planning commission. Uh, so I'm not sure if that's been provided, uh, or, or, that'll be later in the process, but I think the city's comments are reflected in that comment letter.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any notes provided?
Yeah. Anybody else have anything you want to add before entertaining a motion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close, uh, the public hearing.
Second emotion.
Well, you can first it.
First the motion.
And then I can get a second?
Oh, I thought you moved.
Oh, yes.
So I didn't hear the entertainment part.
All in favor of closing public hearing, aye?
Aye.
Um.
You did not provide you with a motion for tabling, but I thought that that would be a pretty easy.
Yeah, it seems like we can just use the file name.
But the question comes up on whether or not you'd like to move, um, the regular meeting which falls on Memorial Day, the twenty-seventh. Would you like to move that to the twenty-eighth? That we want to, um, table to the twenty-eighth because we have the Zoom form or go to June tenth? I'm sure the applicant probably prefers the twenty-eighth.
Uh, Planning Commission, so I don't know if you heard that, Howard. Um, we are talking about potentially our next regularly scheduled meeting would fall on Memorial Day, on the twenty-seventh. We are wondering if the Planning Commission would be available on Tuesday, the twenty-eighth to table this file to.
I, I would be there.
Okay.
And the twenty-eighth's enough time.
Sounds like, I think.
They're usually up as the last. We have a work session until, uh, twenty-four. No, not May twenty-eight, but four. Just be a work session, as you usually.
Yeah.
Part four, yeah.
Four, clear. Okay. Uh, okay. Uh, does the County Commissioners need to leave now that we closed public hearing? Or does that not matter since we're probably taking?
I think since this is in Congress.
Okay.
I think you're going to do it.
Yeah, does anybody have a motion to table this file number?
That'd be twenty-four.
I motion to table file number twenty-four dash eight.
To May twenty-eighth.
To May twenty.
Four P M.
Four P M.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you, great. Cross route. We just need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
That's right over here. All in favor, aye? So making some motions. Thanks, Howard.
You are welcome.
Have a good night.
You're awesome.